We can have people care for animals in their home temporarily until they are ready to come back for their permanent adoption. If you're interested in fostering animals or kittens, like Florida, please go to our website at www.mcmc.gov/animalservices and apply online, and I look forward to receiving your application.
With that, we close this edition of County Report this week. Remember to like us on Facebook and to join us again at this time every week for a look at what's going on inside Montgomery County. We leave you with some scenes from Corbett and Grace Lunsfield's Proof is Possible U.S. Tour, which included a week-long stop in Tacoma Park where residents could tour the tiny house on wheels. I'm Sonia Burke. Thank you for watching.
... smart thing considered the invisible cars while we drop you here.
She loves, she, she loves, she, she loves the net. Oh.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Povar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Seans.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Thank you. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to take a moment to remember and honor those who were killed at the Pulse Club on Sunday morning in Orlando, Florida. I'd like us to take a moment and hold in our hearts the victims and express our support and sympathy to the survivors, friends, and family, and to stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ, Latina, and Muslim communities, who at this time need and deserve our love and support and not hatred and bigotry. If we could take a few moments. Tomorrow evening, there will be a vigil, excuse me, at the Tacoma Park gazebo right across the street from Roscoe's. The organizers of this ask people to bring, please bring candles for yourself and to share with others, and to bring noisemakers, rattles, drums, pots and pans. Families are encouraged to bring children to join in showing support for our community's diversity, and there will be ASL and English interpretation provided. I think this is a critical time for our community to come together, not only to support one another, but also to raise our voices and to make noise, and to make a lot of noise. And I think that's why they want us to bring some pots and pans. I think it's time for us to be loud, and loud so they not only hear us here in Tacoma Park, but they hear us in Annapolis, they hear us in DC, and across the country, and across the world. And they hear that here in Tacoma Park, we believe and we stand up for everyone's right to live their lives with dignity and respect, and that together we stand against homophobia, racism, and Islamophobia. Unfortunately, a few months ago, I read the words of Martin Luther King when we had another conversation regarding Syrian refugees. And I'm saddened by the fact that I have to read it again tonight to remind us that our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. So I hope people will join us tomorrow night to raise our voices and not to be silent. All right, so let's begin our meeting. On our agenda tonight, there's no changes to our agenda this evening. Moving forward, I'd like to remind people of the community conversation on youth success that we're having here on Saturday in the community center. It will begin at 12:30. I hope people will join us for that. And then next Wednesday, June 22nd, we have a number of voting items. We will have the second reading ordinance extending the owner-occupied group house registration program, a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a grant agreement with the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee. We will also have a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a grant agreement with the Tacoma Park Folk Festival Committee, a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for installation of permeable pavement in front of the community center. And we'll have two work sessions. We're hoping to post soon the information regarding the development agreement with the Neighborhood Development Company regarding the redevelopment of the Tacoma Junction Lot, and a discussion of legislative action requests to be submitted to the Maryland Municipal League. Then on the Sunday, June 26th through Wednesday, June 29th, most of the city council will be attending the Maryland Municipal League Convention. And so on Wednesday, June 29th, we will not have a regular council meeting. However, we will have an open house here in the community center to talk about the Tacoma Junction Development Agreement and redevelopment. So if people have specific questions about that, that'll start at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, June 29th. I'd just like to remind folks that the development agreement that will be posted soon has been almost a year that we've been working on this to put it out. So I'd ask people to take their time, look it over, and come with questions on the night of June 29th. And as always, members of the council, myself, and city staff are available at other times to answer questions. Then we have Monday, July 4th, please come to the parade and the fireworks in the evening. And then on our regular Wednesday meeting, July 6th, we'll have a resolution submitting legislative action requests to the Maryland Municipal League, a first reading ordinance approving the franchise agreement with RCN, and we have tentatively scheduled some resolutions for appointments to residents committee. On July 6th, we'll have a number of work sessions. The first one will be a presentation by the Montgomery County Fire and Rescue Services Division Chief, and then tentatively, we'll have a discussion of a revised site plan for 6413 Orchard Avenue. Tentatively scheduled is a discussion of the FY 2015 Community Legacy Grant Application. And we will also have that evening a status update from the city manager on various projects, including Herba Line Coalition, New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, BRT, and the John Nevin Andrews School, including other things. Then on Wednesday, July 13th, we have a voting session with a number of items, a resolution authorizing the execution of a development agreement with NDC for redevelopment of the Tacoma Junction Lot, resolution establishing a community consultation process advisory committee for the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, and appointing members to the committee. I believe we are still taking applications for that committee, so if people would like to apply to it, please contact Sarah Danes or the city clerk, Jesse Carpenter. We will have then also a first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park City Code to restrict the use of plastic, single-use carryout bags. We'll have a resolution authorizing submission of FY 2017 Community Legacy Grant Application and ordinance authorizing an FY 2017 Budget Amendment Number One, and scheduled to have a work session on the library design. And that takes us to July 13th. All right, now we'll move to public comments on voting items this evening. We have five voting items. The first one is a second reading ordinance eliminating the Area B Permit Parking Program. Is there anyone who would like to speak to that? Moving on, is there anyone who would like to comment on the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for preparation of the FY 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report? Next voting item is a resolution establishing guidelines for the Community Quality of Life Grant Program. Next voting item is a resolution establishing guidelines for the Community Partners Program. Next, oh, you want to speak to that one? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Quet Fager. I live at 77 Maple Avenue, and I just want to convey how much and how important it is for us to receive the funding for the Lunch and Learn Program. It's been going on for four years. And thanks to the previous mayor, Bruce Williams, and Jared Smith, and all the council members who have been involved with this program, we have shown a 31% progress in academics, and we provide families some place for their children to go, and we are really in need of this money, and we would thank you if you cooperate with this process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to the resolution establishing guidelines for the Community Partners Program? Moving on, our final voting item this evening is a resolution establishing priorities for the Community Development Block Grant Program. All right, now we'll turn to just general public comments. The microphone's coming, Mr. Lovelace. Ms. Tunis, if you'd like to, go ahead. You can go to the podium. Go ahead, Ms. Lovelace.
Okay. My name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I again want to give condolences for the 50 people who were killed at the Pulse Club a couple of days ago. I simply couldn't believe it when I heard that. That touched me, like I said, that hit me right at home. That was a kick below the belt, because I would not ever imagined in my life that some people would be stooped that low to do that. But again, there's too damn many guns out there. We've got to do all we can to do what we can to get some of these guns off the streets. There's more guns around, and there are human beings in this country. And I'd like to see what the city could do to approach Congress and stuff to let them know that we do not support the runaway guns in this country. We've got to do what we can to teach our people in our schools that guns are not the answer, gangs are not the answer, drugs is not the answer. And also, I want to give my condolences for the people who, for the kid, the two-year-old who was killed by an alligator. You know, again, that's the difference between an alligator and a human being. Alligators are wild animals. They really can't think about what they're doing and have rational decisions like we can. That's why what happened in Florida, in Orlando, was so tragic, that a thinking, intelligent human being could ever conceive of doing something like that. And yet, they said that he was on the FBI watch list as a potential terrorist, or his association with terrorists. Yet he was allowed to purchase a gun? A gun? G-U-N? Is that a joke or what? I mean, I could probably get a gun, but I don't want a gun. You'll never get me to touch a gun. I'd like to see what people can do to help other people get to that vigil tomorrow night. As a gay person myself, I want to get to that vigil and support my brothers and sisters down in Florida. I want to do what I can to help the Muslim community and to topple Islamophobia. I really want to do what I can to help people, not to hurt them. That is not what the miracle of birth was for. It was not meant to kill people, it was not meant to bomb people that you don't understand or you don't like. So please, think about that and try what you can, everything you can, to get people down to that vigil tomorrow night. Try to make it stand for what it really stands for, solidarity, because that could be your son next time, it could be your neighbor, it could be you. You don't know. So please, come out, stand up for peace, stand up for justice, and if anyone's going down that way, let me know tomorrow night so I can get down there. And what time is the starting? I want to know. Thank you.
It's a 7 o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
Yeah, thank you very much. I want to know if anyone's going down there to get me down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peace and love.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis. I'm here tonight to talk on a different topic, and I especially would like the attention of the new council members who have not heard about this issue before, and I'd be happy to talk about them, talk to them about this at another time if they would like any more details, because it's a complicated situation. We have had issues in our neighborhood with sidewalks and the lack thereof. There are a number of people who do not want sidewalks, and apparently, people who have been on the council before know this, that in order to get a sidewalk, you only need two people to request a sidewalk, and the city takes it from there and pushes it through. At the recent meeting, we discussed this, and we discussed that, you know, a better solution that people could all agree on was speed bumps. The requirement for a speed bump is you need to take a petition around to your adjacent block and to your block, the adjacent blocks, and get at least two-thirds of the people to sign that. You need to talk to your neighbors and have them sign it, then you need to have a Citizens Association meeting to discuss it, then you need to have a public hearing. A speed bump costs less than 1% of one block of sidewalk. One block of sidewalk is costing us $200,000 to $300,000, maybe more. This is inappropriate, that we should have one process that's so difficult and another process that's so easy that costs 100 times more. I am very concerned because in talking to my neighbors, there's a lot of hostility towards the people who requested the sidewalk. They do not live on the block where they're requesting the sidewalk. They have pretty much blocked off their street as a private street, and they have their kids playing in the street, and then they want the other neighbors to take on all of the costs, have their yards torn up, where, you know, in a neighborhood where we have a car going by every 10 or 20 minutes, this does not make sense. The process for sidewalks is incredibly skewed, and we have had serious violations of that process, where prior council members, current council members have taken upon themselves that they get to request a sidewalk when the process says the entire city council needs to request a sidewalk. Now that, to me, is unauthorized abuse of power. We have also had city staff starting the sidewalk process themselves. That is completely out of the scope of anything that was ever considered before. We have Public Works promising to shovel people's sidewalks to get them to approve it. That's not going to happen, and it's dishonest. I'm really concerned about this. Our Citizens Association will not request a sidewalk because it tears people apart. That is not what we're about. We want to bring people together, and this is an inappropriate process. I know I'm at the end of my time. I've got a lot more to say about this. The city has been applying for grants that are not appropriate for what they're doing.
Submit your comments in writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have public comments, please just come up to the podium and state your name and where you live.
Good evening, council members. My name is Farrell Hamer. I live at 7418 Holly Avenue, and I want to make a couple of comments about the parking study. Later this evening, you're going to get a presentation, or I should say, we're going to get a presentation, which I'm looking forward to. My interest is not personal. Parking on my block is fine. I don't have any problems with parking on my block. My interest is really the city as a whole and the parking in Old Town, and what's good for the city in general, minimizing conflicts between the parking in Old Town and the residential districts. My background is as a city planner. I've worked, most of you know, I've worked about 30 years in the area as a city planner or planning director. So I understand the lingo, I understand what's in the parking study. I read the report online. I thought it was really good. I talked to Roz Grisby about it this afternoon, and my compliments, the interactive maps are fabulous, the data's really good. The data, what's the best part about the report is actually the data. So we have numbers now, and what the numbers address is the two big questions in the parking study, which as you know, or at least for this part of the study, is there adequate parking capacity in Old Town? Everybody complains about it all the time, can't find a place, or the places are too expensive. What are the numbers? Okay, we have the numbers now. You have the numbers. And the second question is, what's the impact of spillover from that parking in the Old Town to the residential, joining residential districts? The numbers are there. They're all in the report. They broke it down beautifully, they picked, or with the city's help, they picked Friday and Saturday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, which are assumed to be the peak periods. And then they broke it down into, what's the capacity in the residential areas? What's the capacity, not capacity, utilization? So the utilization measures the demand versus the capacity. So now we have utilization rates for the residential areas joining the commercial district. We have all the on-street metered parking on Carol and Laurel, and we have all the off-street lots that are open to public use. So we know now what the utilization rates are for those hours, those days, and those three types of parking that are available. To me, the conclusions are clear, because I sort of can read, I can understand it. The conclusions are not stated in the report, but I think they're there. I'm not going to tell you what they are, because, because I'm not a spoiler, and because I'm anxious to see if the, I did talk to Roz about it, but I'm anxious to see what the consultants say. So what is not in the report, which hopefully you'll get tonight, is an interpretation of the data, and then conclusions as to what the data means, and then thirdly, a menu of solutions to be thought about and discussed, et cetera. What I would just recommend to you is three things. Number one, the process. The frustrating thing for me about the process, can I just, I just, I have one...
Really, really fast, because I cut off Ms. Tunis, so.
Okay. Please make sure that there's opportunity for give and take. You're going to get a presentation tonight, no opportunity for questions, at least not from us. In the future, it would be really important to have work sessions or something so that the community can discuss among ourselves, with the consultants and staff and you. Number one. Number two, please don't lose momentum. You're having this presentation tonight. I don't know, you have recess in August. Keep it going, or you'll lose momentum.
Absolutely.
And the third one is to stay focused. Old Town really is the symbol of Tacoma Park for many people, and this is an important issue, I think, for the whole city. It's really not just localized. That's my...
Thank you, and I hope you come back.
I've debated all day after I wrote this whether to give it tonight, but Mayor Stewart, your comments have convinced me to go ahead, especially with my family's legacy in this town. I'm Buddy Daniels, and I live at 908 Prospect Street, block outside of Tacoma Park at this time. But for 64 years, I've lived at 19 Sherman Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, and I'm extremely proud of that because of what Tacoma Park represents and what my family stood for, my father, Henry Daniels, my mother, Opal Daniels, my sister, Kaye Daniels Cohen, along with the city and its residents over the years, and I'm talking 64 years, and longer. They fought for equal rights for everyone. In Tacoma Park, it didn't matter what your skin color was, what your religion is, what your sexual orientation is, where you were from, and you can still feel, be accepted and feel accepted and safe, again, thanks to the residents and our political leadership, you, and all the political leaders that have come before you. The city has set a great example in the progressive movement for equal rights for everyone, and I just wish the rest of the country would follow, and the world. To the citizens of Orlando, Florida, I'm extremely saddened by the horrific act and domestic terrorism in your community against the LGBT and Latino community. I and so many others are so sorry for your loss of friends and loved ones. I wish like hell, as a volunteer cert, I could have been there to help. Your police and fire department and all the residents of Orlando are to be commended for their first response and the continued response. You are all true heroes, in my opinion. Lastly, I hope everyone knows about the vigil, which I mispronounced, tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the gazebo. I want to thank the organizers personally, and I want to thank the council and mayor for returning my calls about organizing one. It was already being organized as we were talking, but thank you all so very much. It meant a lot, a lot, again, especially with my family's reputation in this community. Thanks again. And beat you.
Any other public comments this evening?
I'm in Ward Two, Mary Jane Machuie. I've just got a lot of things I'd like to touch on. Now that I'm retired, I guess I'm getting, looking at almost like everything in my area. I agree, the sidewalk situation is, I think, is biased and unfair, and I'm scared, I'm worried about the gentrification in my neighborhood. It's really bothering me that you have to, you have to be wealthy to own a house anymore. I bought a, we bought a house, my ex-husband, $69,000, 30 years ago. Now, I could never, we could never buy a house in Tacoma Park. It's just really sad. It's more divided racially than it used to be, you know, more the owner of the houses are more white, upper-middle-class, or upper, upper-class, and it's mostly the people of color that are in apartments, and I think it's really sad. And I'm also here for, as parents especially, and these adults, I should have said something about the community black grants, because they're, what they tend to do is they give, they have money, but it's for more bang for the buck. So they give money for street festivals and such, where a thousand people might come, but how do you know it's helping them? I mean, it's nice and it's fun, but we're just asking for free classes, again, for spirit class, church class, it meets, you're welcome to come at 6:30 before the council meeting every Wednesday night if you think they're not, we're not doing a good job. Give them free, there's two men right now who cannot be in this class, who live in Tacoma Park, they have Down Syndrome, they cannot come because they cannot afford the $90 a month fee, and I'm praying that our grant will be accepted, but we, the city should pay for this class, the city should. We shouldn't have to be begging for grants. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments this evening? No? All right, we'll move now on to council comments. Councilmember Schultz?
Two things. Monday night in my ward, Ward Six, I had a meeting with the residents of Kingwood Avenue, very small street. Most of you who don't live in that neighborhood would probably not even know that it exists, but it's been a peculiar area that has, it's about 17 houses in one block, which is single-family houses, but the problems there seem to involve, apparently, a lot of, a number of illegal dwelling units, and a lot of parked cars by people that don't live in that block, and such that the driveways are full, the curbs are full, and a lot of turnover of residents that people don't recognize. So we had a meeting that involved the director of the Department of Housing and Community Development, a captain in our police department, and a city clerk, a goodly number of residents. And I am going to, this particular block has asked for an extension of the permit parking zone that does not include that block, but they're asking to do that. So as a result, several things. One, the housing department is going to be investigating to see if there are illegal units in that block, and if they are, to either get them registered or to get them closed down. But also, the main thing here is to bring an ordinance before the council to extend the parking permit zone. I realize for 90% of the people in the city of Tacoma Park, this is not a particularly important thing, but I want just to publicly make it known that this is going to be on, I hope will be on the agenda. It's obviously the mayor's decision, and...
Be nice to me. No, be nice.
I'll try. I'll try. It's not in my nature. So that's, so the reason I'm announcing it is I just want to make sure that the residents of that area who may be listening or watching will be aware of what's coming along, council, in terms of council actions. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that the Crossroads Development Authority this Friday is inaugurating a summer concert and movie series. It starts this Friday. The first one will be six, three concerts and three movies that are all directed towards a family orientation. The first one is Friday night at 7:00 on Holton Lane. There's an open area, asphalt there, where they will set up chairs, and people can bring blankets, and be an outdoor screen to watch a movie that, for the family, called Akila and the Bee. And so there's a list of this on the, that's available. If anybody's interested, just contact Melanie Isis at the Crossroads Development Authority or myself. It's open to everybody in the city, and we're real excited about that. And I think encourage folks, the more the merrier. Okay? That's all.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank Ms. Frazier, Ms. Duarte, Ms. Oliver, for coming out today to advocate on behalf of Lunch and Learn. This is an extremely important program. Without city support, without county support, it would not be here. So it's great to hear your voices. I hope my colleagues will vote today to add the extra money that the program needs so that it can start at the end of this month. It's only a six-week program, but the kids that attend, attend the program, I think at this point, they need it. It's not a question of do they want it, but they need this program. I've been working with Brandon Johns, the executive director of Man Up. I think we've spoken at least once every day since the budget was passed to try to make sure that the money that we discussed as a council would be available to the program immediately, because, you know, six weeks passes very quickly, and if you have vendors that you need to pay, and if the money's not there, how do you pay? So I want to, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. It's really important. This afternoon, I attended the Transportation Planning Board meeting, and I found out that the newly reconstituted All Advisory Committee, whose mission is to advise the Transportation Planning Board on issues, programs, policies, and services important to traditionally underserved communities, including low-income communities, minority communities, people with limited English proficiency, people with disabilities, and older adults. We found out today who's going to be on that committee, and I recommended Alex Machovich. She's the president of the Tenant Association at Essex House, and she has been chosen, so she will represent our community. And there are only 31 members of this committee, though these people come from DC, Maryland, and Virginia. So I think this is really special. It just shows the importance of Tacoma Park, and Alex will be able to weigh in on issues I think that a lot of members of the TPB don't hear about or don't know about, because they're not hearing from this constituency. Question for the city manager, has there been any other updates regarding the Carroll Avenue Bridge closure, and will we be able to turn on the lights at Sligo early?
I'll go through the items on my city manager reports, but we do not have a date about when the traffic lights will come on.
Okay. All right. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kova?
Thank you. I do want to just first express my appreciation to the mayor and to Buddy Daniels for making note of the tragedy down in Florida, and I don't want to talk about it at length, but the point to me is that this ultimately is more about extremism than getting caught up in specific questions about what religion somebody is, or who they were targeting. Extremism in all its forms is something that I think we want to try to avoid, which generally do here in this city, and I'm pleased that there's going to be that public meeting tomorrow, the vigil to talk about. Certainly, our hearts go out to all the victims and their families and loved ones. There was, over the recent couple of days, a water main break at the intersection of Boston Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue, and it was fixed and then filled in, and then dug back up three separate times. The pipes were installed in 1933, and so when you have old pipes, things like that happen. I talked to the crew several times down there, and I think they were working hard and doing the best they could, but a couple of lessons emerged from that. I know one of the things that we're talking about in terms of Annapolis is what we can do to get better coordination from WSSC. The one thing I would say here is that when they're done, they don't send out something saying the water's now safe. If the water's not safe, they do send out something saying the water's not safe, so it's kind of like, don't call us, we'll call you. And I guess people kind of understand that, and when the water runs clear, then it's okay, but it seems like it would be a pretty minimal thing either way to just send out a statement saying it's okay to have the water now, once it runs clean. And I think in an emergency, it's difficult to do this, but if, if there's a way when they know they're going to turn off the water to kind of alert the people in the neighborhood before they do that, that'd be helpful. It may not be possible in an emergency. The other thing, though, is that it really messed up traffic, and I'm thinking, this is sort of a dry run for what could happen over a longer period of time with the Carroll Avenue Bridge, because it's another, you know, skinny state highway. There were people on all kinds of side streets where you never saw cars before, except occasionally, and with very serious traffic jams. So we may just want to think about really making sure we have sufficient police for those kinds of situations. And actually, Philadelphia Avenue going up through the various easements is due for a major replacement of all these water mains, so I think they held off on that for a while so we wouldn't conflict with the Carroll Avenue-
Actually, it was at our request.
Yeah, right. So these are the kinds of things that happen, but it's going to stretch out over a longer period of time, even when the Carroll Avenue is done, and then potentially Philadelphia will be closed. So I just wanted to say we're going to have a lot of coordinating to do with WSSC.
Right. Councilmember Mall?
Thank you. Just sticking to the WSSC subject for a moment, city staff shared with us a note from WSSC about sewer line replacement that would be going on, but it didn't give any information on where, when. Do you know if there's any more information on that?
No, and often when this comes out, it's months until that is done. So we, as soon as we have a sense of something coming, we'll let people know.
Okay. But you expect to get at least some warning of-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks. And then a road-related issue on 410, in the block between Sycamore and Woodland Avenue, there's a very large pothole. I've talked to the Public Works Director and Ian Chamberlain about it in the past.
I'm sorry, between Sycamore and-
And Woodland on 410, which, you know, was repaved with great effort just a couple of years ago. And it seems to be a place where there's a minor water main or water line leak. It's percolating up, so there's always flowing water on the road, but it's been like that since, for nine months now, so patched repeatedly. And at this point, the patch is so poorly put in place that literally the asphalt is up over the sidewalk.
I have seen that, yeah.
So if there's any way to get that actually fixed, it's supposed to have just patched, and I don't know if it's helpful for political engagement to try to get the state folks to second the request, but I'm happy to do so if you can help.
Okay, I'll find out.
City staff can help get a contact on that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Karashi?
Since we're on the subject of potholes, I hit one into the driveway here at the library.
Yes.
So I just wanted to alert the city manager of that as well. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. I just have a couple of things tonight. One, I wanted to thank the folks who put on Jazz Fest this Sunday, even though it was hot and very windy. It was a terrific Jazz Fest, and I want to thank them for that. Also, I just wanted to give a quick update on the WSSC issues on Little Eastern, and this has been an ongoing concern. Residents have come, who live on Little Eastern and Westmoreland, and ask for council's assistance. I wanted to let folks know that the head of Public Works is coordinating a date and time for the city arborist to do a walk-through with the WSSC arborist. We are still waiting for WSSC to hear back of when they will set a meeting with the neighbors on Westmoreland, but the good news is that we finally heard back from the general manager's office, and I have a meeting with the general manager of WSSC scheduled for July 6, which is much better than the first date we were given, which I'm not sure I would still be in office. But we, so hopefully on July 6, I will be able to sit down with the general manager, not only talk to her about this project on Little Eastern, but also bring up some other concerns that we have regarding WSSC. We will continue to keep people updated on that, as we know. The other thing is that on this Friday evening, the ACE Academy that has been running an after-school program at Essex House is having its final event that will be here in the auditorium at 6:00 PM. The children will be performing, so I'm sure they would welcome people to come. It's been a terrific program at Essex House. And then also, the library on Monday night will be hosting an LGBTQ picture book reading event. June is LGBTQ Pride Month, and they're doing it to celebrate that and also honor those who lost their lives in Orlando during the mass shooting. And so that will be Monday night at the library at 7:00 PM. Children and families of all ages are welcome. I think that's it for me. City manager?
Can I make an additional comment?
I'm sorry?
I want to just add one thing. I had breakfast this morning with Ralph Bennett, who is president of Purple Line Now, which has been a strong and effective advocacy organization for the creation of the Purple Line, and they are, of all the organizations I know, in closest touch with the state of Maryland on progress. And he told me that on July 16 is going to be the date of the formal financial closing for the Purple Line. Now, what this basically means is that this is the most important date of all the sort of dates where we've gone, oh, boy, finally, but this is probably the last of the, oh, boy, finally, things, and it is, it's the date in which the state of Maryland, the federal government, and the concessionaire, and all those who are responsible for funding the construction of the Purple Line and its operation over the next 30, from the five years of construction and the 30 years of operation, will be signing the closing documents honoring those financial commitments. And in that respect, the Maryland Transportation Administration, he says, is thinking in terms of having a, some sort of a major kind of photo opportunity at that event. He doesn't know what it's going to be, but, but this is where the federal government actually puts its money on the table, and that's going to be a big day. Now, the project is already started, and it's not being delayed because of this, but this is kind of like a turning point. Okay?
And also, I just need to correct, on June 29, when we're scheduled to have the open house here, I misspoke. We do not have a place for that yet. So stay tuned for the open house on the Tacoma Junction redevelopment on June, Wednesday, June 29. Now, the city manager.
Thank you. And related to the Tacoma Junction project, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update. We had hoped that by today, we would have posted for the public the development agreement draft and the cover item for the council's discussion next Wednesday night. We hope to have that very soon. We've been working on it very hard, back and forth, and we still anticipate posting the documents this week. We'll be getting out lots of information on that. And as you said, we will have the, an opportunity to really talk about it by the public on June 29, and have a lot of time for people to really read it, it's complex, and be prepared with some questions. Wanted to just answer a couple of questions that have come up. One had to do with how we're making our electric vehicle charging stations available, and we will be getting signs in soon. Those signs will allow people to park, at the beginning, anyone can park there for up to an hour. If you're charging, you get, depending on the location, either two or four hours. We're going to monitor that and see if that ends up being a problem, because we want to make sure that people who have an electric vehicle that want to charge have one that's available. So we'll be monitoring it, and we may change the signs. Back to the Carroll Avenue Bridge project, as we had announced before, there is a delay in closing the Carroll Avenue Bridge. It's probably at least mid-July before it will be closed. I did hear from a secret source that the pedestrian bridge may open tomorrow. So, anyway, Arthur David Olson is my eyes on the ground here. The, one of the things that we had been checking is, you know, when do the street lights come on? They've kind of been prepare, in preparation for that. We still don't know the date for that. There is at least one location where I have asked that a stop sign that was covered be uncovered, because the stop bar had been put on the ground, on the pavement, and so people were, some people were stopping, and some people weren't stopping, and other people weren't sure what they were doing. So at least we'll try to be as consistent as possible while we're in this transition period. There was some questions about whether a portion of Cycle Creek Parkway will stay open to vehicles on Sundays, once the bridge is closed. The answer is yes. That was always the proposal, that, at least for the portion that's the detour route, vehicles will be able to continue, it won't be closed on, Cycle Creek Parkway will not be closed on Sundays in that section. One other thing that's somewhat related to the closure of, and the delay in the closure of the Carroll Avenue Bridge is the item that's on next week's agenda for some permeable pavement in the parking lane of Maple Avenue in front of this building. And this was something that we were putting off, because we felt that we didn't have time before the Carroll Avenue Bridge closed to be doing work on Maple Avenue. But with this delay, and with an opportunity to get a little bit of this work done, we're able to move forward. It is with the stormwater money and the budget, so it's a, it is a program that we had originally hoped to do some of where the pothole is in the back parking lot, but it makes more sense at this point, given some changes coming up, that, that we do this section of Maple. So that's, item is on for next week's agenda. Following up from last council meeting, Councilmember Smith had noted that State Highway had placed a detour sign on a resident's lawn. That sign has been relocated. We have been trying to clear off some overgrown vegetation that obstructed a stop sign at the intersection of Poplar and Fourth Avenue, and we will be doing some work around this building on that. Councilmember Kovar had passed along information about a hole in the ground at Memorial Park that caused a resident to sprain his ankle, and public works staff did address the issue by filling in the hole, so that's good. On a request by Councilmember Karashi about 911 call data, we're still going to have to get some information back to you, so it's going to take a little bit. I think that's all I have.
Just a couple of things. In terms of the electric parking spots, just a couple of requests. The first is that I've noticed people who bring their car there late at night and leave it and then pick it up in the morning. So there's a chance to make the restrictions only apply outside the hours of, let's say, 12 AM to 6 AM, something like that?
Oh, let me be clear. After, I think it's after 4:00 PM on these properties, there's no restriction, so that's not an issue.
Okay, great. That's fantastic. That's the main piece on that. And then you had provided some information for me on the issue of flags, and if you could just summarize that for the rest of the council?
I forgot that completely. Councilmember Mall had asked about extending the time that American flags are posted along, kind of around Tacoma Park. Currently, we have them posted, installed along- Currently, we have them posted, installed along the Independence Day Parade Route, just a few days before the 4th of July and a few days after. It's, it's a very restricted time period. And the request was to have that from Memorial Day. When we looked into that, the equipment, the brackets and the flags that we have are not suitable for, they're not durable enough for that length of a time. And so we would have to buy different materials, different equipment to put that in. Then I think there's a question, and that's, this is really a question, I think, for the full council, about, is it something that is important that it be just along the parade route during a set period of time, so it kind of stands out? Or is it something that shows our patriotism over a longer period of time, that might be around different parts of the city for a longer period of time? I was a little bit concerned that if we just went ahead and changed, that there might be some backlash to that. So I don't know that tonight's a good night to have a vote on that, but it's something that I'd like you to think about and talk with, and maybe we could have some direction to, to me is, what you would like to do with that.
And I just wanted to briefly follow up and say that I support bringing it up as an agenda item in the future, but just the, what I, partly what I was trying to get at is, it's so beautiful when they're up.
I know.
And at least for the last couple of years, it's been just barely before the holiday. So even if it was just trying to squeeze in-
A little bit longer before the holidays.
Two or three more days. It's just, it's a really nice season in town.
Yeah, it's dramatic to see. Okay.
Councilmember Schultz?
My question has to do with the temporary traffic signals that the S.H.A. has installed. Had some questions from constituents wanting to know about the, raise the question that you've answered, but my, my question is, is that, like the ones at Maple Avenue near the hospital, those are not, those are city roads. So why isn't it our prerogative to make a decision on those traffic lights, as opposed to the S.H.A.?
That's a good question. It certainly was part of the S.H.A. project. So I don't know if that's, if there's a reason for that or not. I'm sorry, it's something to ask about.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the report. And now I think we have two sets of minutes. Is that correct? One from April 27th and one from May 4th? I'm looking at the city clerk. Are we ready for those? Okay. All right. Well, would someone like to move the, both sets? Councilmember Schultz, a second? Councilmember Kovar, second? Any discussion of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No? All right, so the minutes are adopted. Now let's move to our voting session. The first item we have is a second reading ordinance, eliminating the Area B permit parking program.
If I might, there has been a proposal since the time that this first reading was voted on, and I have in this section, it's the green sheet, the language that Councilmember Kovar has suggested to modify the ordinance. This language, and I took it a little bit further, farther adding a whereas clause to kind of explain the language. It would be adding, whereas the council wishes to provide a temporary accommodation to certain current holders of Area B parking permits, who may face hardship with the ending of the program. And then, one of the, the city council would ordain, besides the fact that the Area B permit parking program will end, effective June 30, 2016, that the city manager may, in her discretion, on an individual basis, provide an Area B parking permit to allow parking for residents who are current holders of Area B permits, and for whom the elimination of the Area B program is a hardship, provided that only one permit per family will be granted and further provided, that the parking area for such Area B permit holders will be in a public city lot designated by the city manager. So that is a possible amendment that you may choose to, to move on tonight.
Great. So first, this is a second reading ordinance. I think what we'll do is first move that and then entertain the amendment. So would someone like to move the ordinance, please? Given Councilmember Kovar moved, Councilmember Karashi second. Any discussion of the ordinance? Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I guess I've just, I had thought we were going to consider a time limit on that discretion for the city manager to make a change like this. It's currently, could, you could, for example, give-
I guess, yes. A lot of the discussion was for up to a year. I think that's a reasonable amount of limit to it.
We haven't moved the amendment yet, so let's move the amendment and then discuss. You're talking about the amendment?
I'm talking about the amendment.
Yeah. We haven't moved the amendment yet.
So I thought, uh-
We moved the, the ordinance and then we have to move the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking for move on the amendment.
No, because we didn't need, all right. So would someone like to move the amendment?
I will move the amendment.
Councilmember Kovar, a second? Second?
Second.
Sorry, Councilmember Mail. Okay, now, go ahead, sorry. I just wanted to make sure.
On, on the amendment, the question is, it's unclear to me, for example, how long the city manager could extend permits. And the way I read it right now, it appears to be that you could extend it for 10 years. And so just trying to make it clear that that would be a, an authorization the city manager has for up to a year or up to two years, some defined period of time.
My recommendation, and this is up to, obviously, to the council members, but I would prefer that it not be longer than about a year. Just, partly the nature is that the city lot that would be considered is probably the Tacoma Junction lot, and we would be moving on activity at that lot.
Is that okay with the folks on Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, if I, if I could just speak generally about the amendment, or are we just speaking now on this timing portion?
I think we should speak now on the, well, on the timing of the, because that has been an amendment to the amendment. So-
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm okay with the time limit, so I'll just, I'd like to speak about the underlying amendment when appropriate.
Okay. So first, let's talk about the amendment to the amendment, which is to add a year that the city manager would have this flexibility. Is there any discussion to that, or?
Yes, I just think that the city manager should be given discretion on, on it, given the, the facts, as the city manager just described them, that's that the only practical city-owned lot is, is in fact, the one we're talking about, and in a year's time, it's probably not even going to be available anymore. So it's kind of a moot point. But it should be a little bit more available than why, why automatically terminate it.
All right. Any other discussion of the amendment to the amendment?
How, how long are the permits usually for other types of parking available for?
One year.
One year.
There are some two-year permits. But the Area B permits have always been one-year permits.
So there's nothing that precludes you from coming back to council, saying that you want to extend it, right?
That's true.
All right, sorry. Councilmember Schultz, did you have something else to say about?
Just on the amendment itself, the first amendment.
All right. So let's vote on the amendment to amend, the amendment. All those in favor of adding a year to the current amendment that the city manager would have this discretion, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay?
Just to clarify, it would say, for example, for up to one year.
For up to one year.
Okay. So the amendment to the amendment passes six to one, and now let's discuss the amendment. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to vote in, in favor of, of this amendment and, and the ordinance itself, but I did want to make some, some, some comments about what we're doing and why we're doing it, because when this matter first came, came up, I figured, well, this is a matter that belongs to the residents of Ward 1. But it turns out that several people in my ward, in Ward 6, which is the farthest, you know, a good two miles, the way the crow flies, from, from the, from the metro, it's been around for about 30 years. People have been doing that. And of course, the argument is, the, the reason for doing this ordinance is that back when that was adopted, the, the bus service around the city wasn't nearly as complex and thorough as it is, as it is now. But nevertheless, some people still have relied on that, and some of my constituents have brought that to, to my attention, to the city's attention. And it sort of got me to thinking, is that what we're, when we talk about the issue is like, it creates, it's sort of become a conflict between the selfish interests of residents in Ward 1, who are inconvenienced by people not from their neighborhood parking there, and the selfish interests of people who would like to be able to have access to the metro, within being able to walk to the metro, because of certain complicated aspects of their daily lives, because they go to work and other things that I won't get into. And so what has sort of has happened is we pitted some Tacoma Park residents against some other Tacoma Park residents. And I'm unhappy about that, because we're a small town. And the other thing is that I, I have realized is that the metro is a utility. It's just like the, the, the services we get from Pepco and Washington Gas. It's got, it's something that people have, have come to rely on, some completely, others hardly at all. But nevertheless, it happens to be where it is. If it was located on the other side of the city, then the tables would be turned, and the people in Ward 6 would be disgruntled about people parking in their neighborhood. But the people that are in Ward, in Area B are all Tacoma Park taxpayers. This is not folks from Silver Spring or Hyattsville, or, you know, other horrible places like that, right? So I just, going forward, we will, we will pass this undoubtedly tonight, but I, I think that as a city council, we need to be thinking about the needs of trying to help people access the, the metro, in a way that doesn't inconvenience other residents too much. We, all of us have to make a little bit of compromises. And if we can do that, figure out a program that will work, not necessarily using a permit parking scheme, then I'd, I'd love for us to be able to talk about that. And as we get, go through this parking study, which we're going to sink our teeth into tonight, I would appreciate ideas in, in that regard. And I won't dwell on this, this right now. It's just except that I, I, it was not something I had thought of as an important element in our community, but I, I do think we need to emphasize the community spirit involved here of neighbors on one side of the city, trying to help out the needs of neighbors on the other side of the city. And, you know, that people live near the metro by accident of history, and other people don't, and, but it's, it's an important, it's a very green process, getting people to ride the metro, and getting out of their cars as much as possible. In fact, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you very much. I've had my, had my, made my, my sermon at-
Any other comments on the amendment? Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I, I appreciate the perspective of Councilmember Schultz, and I don't, I don't think I disagree intensely with anything that he said. When this came up, and based on the information that the city manager had presented, it looked like something that had outlived its, its usefulness. Relatively small number of people seemed to be using it. And that was combined with a, a sense that enforcement, in terms of access to driveways and other kinds of parking for residents in the affected area, wasn't everything that it could be. So I think both of those things kind of came together. And I thought initially, when we approved the elimination of this, and it was done pretty quickly, that we'd just do that and move on. And yes, certainly in the larger discussion of parking that we're going to be undertaking, elements of how people from different parts of the city should go from one place to another could, could be part of that. Subsequently, when it emerged that several people who lived in Councilmember Schultz's ward did rely on this, and it would be potentially a challenge for them, I thought it made sense to hold off on the final vote and have an opportunity to talk about. And Fred and I did do that several times. And, you know, my general approach would be to try to find some way to be accommodating and not too disruptive. And I appreciate that the city manager came up with the idea, well, maybe there's a compromise where people could park in city-owned lots, which would take the pressure off of the residential areas. And so, we looked at a couple of them, the parking lot right here with the famous pothole, and also the Tacoma Junction. And, you know, I actually spent a little time driving around, looking at my odometer, and, believe it or not, from probably not the closest Baltimore Avenue block, but the next one in Buffalo, where some of the people do park, it's the same distance to that point at the metro where Cedar hits, hits the metro. So it's about .4 miles from there from here. Now, I will say that you go from Tacoma Junctions a little farther. It's a lot farther if you go along Carroll and all the way down like that. But if you cut through side streets as you would when you're walking, and I can, you know, I, I did it that way, and I can give the specific streets to somebody, it's a little over .5. So it's actually kind of in the same ballpark. I'm not going to say it's wonderful if you've gotten accustomed to the other thing, but I think it's a reasonable compromise, and I hope that we can support it and adopt this. And I certainly look forward to continuing to talk with Councilmember Schultz about some of these category of issues. So, thanks.
Great. Any other comments on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any amendment passes? All right, now let's vote on the ordinance. All those in favor of the, or, any other discussion, further discussion on this, I should say. Nope, good. All those in favor of the ordinance?
It's a vote call.
Oh, right, second, sorry. I was trying to go too fast.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Karashi?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz? Mayor Stewart?
Aye.
All right. So that passes. Now we're on to our second item, which is single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the preparation of our FY 2016 comprehensive annual financial report.
This is an item that I've mentioned before. We have had up to five-year contracts with one firm for our audit and one firm for the preparation of our CAFR, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We, in this fifth year, will continue to use Cone Resnick for the audit. We would also like to use them for the preparation of the CAFR. They're a good firm, and we've been a little less pleased with the other firm that we have used. We will be going out for requests for proposals for up to five years again in the coming year, for those services.
And Council- Wait, Councilmember Kovar, did you have to recoup yourself from this?
It just so happens by coincidence that Cone Resnick handles my personal accounting and also that of my wife's company, where she's a partner. I did check with the city attorney today, and they said it's not a conflict of interest and I could vote, but I think out of prudence, I would just not vote on this one.
Okay, great. So then, Councilmember Siemens moved. Is there a second? Second? Councilmember Karashi? Any conversation? Any discussion? No? All right. This is a single reading ordinance, so- Yep, go ahead.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Karashi?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz? Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're up to the resolutions. The first one is a resolution establishing guidelines for the Community Quality of Life Grant Program.
What we have before you are the, kind of the implementation and acknowledgement of the discussion we've had before, starting in the budget process, and then with a presentation by Ms. Danes, Director of Housing and Community Development. We're proposing basically guidelines for three programs. One is for the Community Development Block Grant Program, that would limit this to capital projects. Community Quality of Life Grants, which would be for one-year grants to nonprofits primarily that meet the criteria that the council has identified in terms of economic development efforts, livable community for all kinds of things. Let me get the right, get the right definition here. Arts and Humanities Projects and Events, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Programs and Events, Innovative Economic Development Projects. And this would be a competitive grant process with grants, minimum of $5,000 to a maximum of $10,000. There was a total budget in the allocated for this of $60,000. The other item is a Community Partners Program, which would also be a competitive grant program- The other item is a Community Partners Program, which would also be a competitive grant program that would be for services that would add additional capacity greater than what the city staff can provide for up to three-year grants. And so all of these are before you. They follow the programs that you had spoken about before. For the Community Partnership Grant, there is supplemental information that was provided on Item Four, and this would change the attachment to the resolution that would put a set aside for Lunch and Learn, changing it from $25,000 to $45,000 from the unappropriated amount of the Community Partners Program. And the request for that was, I think, perhaps not quite a realization of the timing and the need for these funds that had been discussed during the council's deliberations on the budget. The Lunch and Learn Program runs from June 27th to August 5th, and the amount of time that it would take to prepare requests for proposals, think about what these should be, put out the requests for proposals, get the requests, get the proposals back, and evaluate them, and come to council, is not likely to be even done before the program is over August 5th. So if the council would like to make that change, that is a possible change that you could make as an amendment to this resolution.
Great, thank you. Before us, we have the resolution. We're going to vote on the, we have three resolutions. So the first one we'll take is the resolution establishing guidelines for the Community Quality of Life Grant. So that's the first one. It's Item Three in your agenda packet. So would someone like to move that resolution?
Move that.
Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Mayo, any discussion?
Just briefly, what is a, oh, it's not even on this one. Let me ask a question anyway. What's an organization in good standing with the state of Maryland?
There's, for organizations that have to file, there's a list of items of organizations that are not in good standing, and we do check those when we retain, you know, look at a contract application.
Okay. Primarily means that they file their person property taxes.
That only applies to one category of these programs. It doesn't apply to all of them.
And I think that's because it's more business-oriented, but we, you know, we always look at good standing of whatever organization it is, in whichever categories they would apply.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
The eligible project is about ten of them listed. And do we want to make sure that it's understood that these are examples and not the definitive list?
I think it is understood, and it does have et cetera at the end of the list, but it says examples include in that.
Okay.
Any other discussion of this resolution? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this resolution passes. The next is the resolution establishing guidelines for the Community Partners Program, and this is the one where we have a change, potential change. Councilmember Smith?
First, I'd like to say to the city manager, thank you for coming up with this alternative. I will say that I do support it. I think it's imperative that we figure out how Lunch and Learn is funded this year. Once, if the council passes this change in the original agenda item, what is going to be the next step? Does that mean that city staff signs a similar contract that Adventist Community Service signed with the city? Because if that's the case, then that contract is already prepared. Or is there going to be a different document that we have not seen before?
The contract would be very similar to the one from last year, and we've already shared that with the fiscal agent for the program, so that that process could begin. That, you know, is presuming the $25,000. If there's a change that is approved by this council, we would be proceeding that it would go up to 40,000, 45,000, if that's the right proposal, and then we would include that difference in a budget amendment that would be coming before you in July, but we would be operating as if that would be the process.
Okay. Switching gears to the partnership, putting out the RFP, and once you get all of the solicitations back, we have already mentioned ManUp as being one of these partners. Is that going to, does that mean that we will sole source with ManUp, or does that mean ManUp is going to be part of the larger pool and have to apply?
The $35,000 is in the city's budget in the Recreation Department for $35,000. So that's been established. If there's any additional issue item, or there is a different idea that they put forward as a proposal, that'll be considered.
Because during the budget discussions, I had proposed that we take $20,000 and give to Lunch and Learn, and $20,000 to give to ManUp. So what you're saying is the $20,000 that I proposed for ManUp, and I thought that was the direction that we were going, it's going to be added to this big pool of money for the partnership, and ManUp has to compete with everyone else to get the $20,000 that I mentioned during the budget process.
That's how this is written at this time. Part of the reason that it is, is there's a little bit of a difference between the Lunch and Learn Program, which is a very established program, so we know exactly what the criteria are. The other one, I think we need to see how the proposal comes in for ManUp for the partnership, how the council looks at that for the $20,000 or whatever amount, I mean, I think it's up to you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to move this as it's amended with the proposal tonight. And I would just like to make it clear to those watching from home that this is not adding additional money to the Lunch and Learn Program. This is just changing the funding mechanism so that it can happen at a timely manner.
That's correct.
Okay, so I have made a motion. If you can get a second, I appreciate it.
And Councilmember Smith, second. Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, just one question of clarification. So with the partnership funds, those are anticipated to be, or at least to potentially be available for outside organizations on a multi-year basis?
Up to three years, yes.
But with this money that we're talking about in the budget, with the additional money which I support for Lunch and Learn, that's just a one-year thing?
That's correct, yes. That's a one-time set aside.
So after this year, does that mean Lunch and Learn would have to apply?
Absolutely.
To be a partner?
Right. And I think that one of the, yes, and I think that one of the things that I want to be really careful about when we do identify, kind of how we define, put out the request for proposals, is some of these programs that go over a fiscal year timeframe across the July one make this thing difficult. So I think we would want to have the, have some understanding about that in the proposal, about when the proposal gets issued and how long it goes for. So I think there's some thought that needs to go with that. It's part of the reason this is a tough one. We also have similar problems. It's not in the partnership thing, but with the Fourth of July items, we actually give the money in the year before the Fourth of July so that they can do the purchase of the fireworks.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, in this case, though, those two organizations, they may very well get more going forward, but...
That's correct. But this is, but this item was for this immediate year without an implication that it goes forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the resolution as amended on the Guidelines for the Community Partners Program, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. The last resolution is establishing priorities for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Would someone like to move this?
Move.
Councilmember Mayo, a second?
Second.
Councilmember Koreshi, second. Any discussion?
That's Councilmember Koreshi.
Yeah, that's what I thought I heard.
I did, but I'll let...
Okay, he has it. Sorry.
I have one quick question.
All right, Councilmember Kovar?
One quick question. So in CDBG funds, depending on the makeup of a community, as I understand it, if you have a level of lower-income population, then the CDBG funds can be spent anywhere within the city. And if you're not above that level, then it can only be targeted to those parts of the city. Can you say which of those categories we're in?
For this, it's the various, it's the different sections of the city that meet the criteria for the CDBG grants.
All right. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that passes. And I would, as we move on to our work session, I just want to say thank you very much to the city staff, and particularly Sarah Danes for her work on this, and the staff in the Housing and Economic Development Department. And if folks would like to see, the documents are up this week, but I think the documents that were presented to the council on June 1st were very helpful in understanding the changes that are happening.
That's right.
So if anybody has any other questions, going back and looking at those documents, I think are very helpful. So thank you very much, and we're looking forward to Lunch and Learn starting. Great. All right, now, parking.
So my name's Eric Anosberg. I'm planner in the Housing and Community Development Department, and tonight we are talking about parking. In particular, we're talking about a parking management study that the city has been undertaking for a little while. And so I just wanted to start off with giving a sense of where we are in the presentation, I'm sorry, where we are in the project and what we can look at moving forward. There was some questions earlier, something about process, so I'm hoping that this might clarify that for folks. So the city staff is taking a really deep dive look at the parking programs in the city, which include metered parking, residential permit parking, parking on public lots, opportunities with, for discussions with private property owners who have parking assets in the city, as well as what's happening across the border in DC as parking is not, issues related to parking transcend jurisdictional boundaries all the time. And we started this process earlier in the fiscal year, really in the late summer, early fall, and this, I think, helps give a sense of sort of where we are now and where we've come from. And I just also wanted to reiterate that we have been and continue to engage the community on the project and on input from the beginning, and we will continue that moving forward. The project started with some online surveys with residents and businesses. We received about 300 responses to that, which were really helpful to help us shape our research program moving forward. And that also started in September. And right now, we're about halfway through the process, and looking forward, we're planning on some public meetings in October, two at this point. We're looking at the Community Center and at the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. And at that point, we'll be developing recommendations, getting a sense of how community members feel about them, and then moving forward with some recommendations for city council to consider about actions moving forward. As a, just as a note, we do have a comment form available on the parking study project page. The link is here at the bottom of the page. And so we're always available, hoping to get input from the community about this presentation, about other documents that are online, or just about issues that they might feel are pertinent to their neighborhood, or the way that they use the city and the city streets. Tonight, we have a presentation from consultants from Sabre Wang, who are here, Brian Laverdy. We'll give a presentation shortly. I just wanted to point out that the, as part of our research program, we had applied for technical assistance funding from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, and Aaron Morrow was over there from the Council of Governments. And we were awarded this funding, which provided the technical assistance that Brian and his team provided over the last six or eight months on this project, and we've been very happy and excited about what we've heard and seen from them. And we do have some great material online that folks can really look at and dig more into. And as far as tonight, you know, we hope that you enjoy the presentation and have some questions for Brian. And moving forward, just be conscious of sort of the general issues around parking. It's a public space asset in the city that's managed with public resources, entails costs and revenues for the city. And, you know, we're certainly looking for some direction moving forward as far as outcomes that might be desired as they relate to parking and this asset in the city, as they relate to the city council's priorities of a livable, fiscally sustainable, environmentally sustainable, service-forward community with a focus on the economic development initiatives here. So I will turn it over to Brian. And, thanks.
Hi, good evening. As Eric had mentioned, my name's Brian Laverdy, and...
Did the mouse? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's right here. Ah, you hit it away from me. And I'm with Sabre Wang and Associates. We've been working since, okay, we've been working since around February on the ongoing phase of the parking study. And I won't read you all of these points, but they pull directly from the scope that was developed by the city and by COG, which we responded to. The general gist of this parking study was the fact that there's a growing sense that development in the area, particularly along the Carroll Avenue corridor, a lot of which is on the DC side of the line, is putting additional parking pressures in that area, and also a sense that parking pressures are coming from Montgomery College as well. But there wasn't an established inventory of how many parking spaces, both on-street and off, were available in the area. And so we did that inventory out in the field, and we counted every single space on every block face and in every lot. And then we also did some data collection at two times, on weekday evenings, I believe it was Wednesdays, that we did the data collection for weekday evenings, and then on Saturday evenings to see what the utilization rate was, block face by block face and lot by lot throughout our study area. And the focus of the study really is to, around balance. We wanted to maintain a balance of the needs of the residential communities that surround the commercial corridor and the businesses in the commercial corridor, metro patrons and the college as well, and also maintain the balance that the city strives for between, you know, auto modes and transit and walking and biking. This is our study area. It was drawn to encompass five of the residential permit parking zones, Zones One, One A, Two, Two A, and Three, but also to encompass the Carroll Ave, Carroll Street corridor from the metro station all the way up to Tacoma Junction, and capture some of the areas on the DC side of the line that were seen as inseparable in terms of a parking shed for the area. The study area really is defined by that one central commercial corridor in terms of what draws people into the area, what brings people here in their cars to park, as well as the college at the other end of our study area. And it's just a blow-up of that commercial corridor, showing the density of businesses, not only businesses, but also some community institutions, like a couple of the religious institutions in the corridor as well. Just so, the inventory of what you do have in the study area. There are over 1,400 on-street spaces, and we, in a lot of block faces, those aren't marked out, but we use the Maryland State standards as far as what distance a space needs to be. So wherever we had a block face that maybe say was, we had 70 feet between driveways or 150 feet between driveways, we applied a formula to calculate how many spaces that equates to. And of course, in some places, we have metered spaces that are easier to measure. And this is our map, one of the maps that was mentioned on the website, showing all of the on-street parking inventory within the study area. And the numbers that that comes out to, the large majority of the on-street spaces within our study area are residential permit parking zones, and most of the rest is either unrestricted, i.e. free, or metered. or metered spaces, with just a handful of other uses scattered throughout. And as far as the, the spaces that are off-street, either in lots or garages, there are around about 900 spaces, over 2,000 if you include the Montgomery College garages, which technically are just outside our study area, but because as a major driver, bringing people to the area, and because that's a major resource just outside the area, we wanted to include that as well. That's, that's the 1,200 that you see there, the permit-only, publicly-owned facilities.
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
What about the church lot that is actually in the District of Columbia?
The Tacoma Park Seventh Day Adventist Church Lot? Yes. Where's the church? The main church building is on the Tacoma Park side of the line. Their lot is just across in DC. We did look at that. That is this pink-colored zone right here, and I'll have more to say about that in a little bit. That would represent a chunk of that 155 permit-only private. And I've got it listed as permit-only because they do rent out those spaces during the week to, to some of the businesses in the area.
Thank you.
Moving on, just from the inventory of parking, the, the study area has a really good inventory of pedestrian and bike infrastructure. You've got a strong street grid and very few gaps in the sidewalk network. And really, you could describe almost any street in the study area as being bike-friendly, maybe with the exception of a couple portions of Carroll Avenue. But it's really easy to get around walking and biking in the study area, so that's a big strength. And there are five Capital Bike Share stations, either within the study area or just outside it. And that's another strong asset. The bike parking in the study area is concentrated in a handful of places. There are 162, or there's parking for 162 bikes at the metro station, if you consider each rack to accommodate two bikes. And sometimes, they might accommodate three, I don't know. And my understanding is that during the typical workday, that bike parking, the, the lockers and the racks at the metro station is pretty full. You have a very strong bike-to-metro pattern going on in the area. Most of the rest of the bike parking in the study area is concentrated in a couple other places, largely around the, the bend on Carroll Avenue, around Carroll and Laurel. Then with some more spaces up near Tacoma Junction, and also some spaces near where we stand right here, near the Community Center. The next series of slides really give some of our utilization results from when we took the utilization data. And it focuses in, on walksheds for particularly high-value destinations in the study area, or places that people are the most likely to want to, to come to and park. These are all measured out at a quarter-mile radius from the, the centroid of the area. And not a, as the crow flies, quarter-mile radius, but along the, the sidewalk network. And so the first one is the metro station. And this first map shows the utilization on a weekday evening. And just, we have two different color ramps, blue for, for paid-apart facilities, and red for permit-only. And, but in general, darker means there were more cars there. It was high, more highly utilized. And as I toggle back before, between weekday and, and Saturday, you can see that on a weekday evening, the utilization right along the Carroll Street corridor is somewhat higher than on Saturday. And then this next map, our next destination is the intersection of Carroll Avenue and, or Carroll Street, I should say, and Maple Street, basically right in front of where Bus Boys and Poets is. Bus Boys and Poets came up a lot in our conversation with stakeholders. And all of these maps are up on the website for folks to digest at greater length, I should say. And then the next intersection was at Carroll and Laurel. And you can see the shift between weekday and Saturdays in terms of the, the density of rates, utilization rates. And then for the, for Montgomery College, we actually used two spots to be the center of our walk shed in order to bracket the entire portion of that campus, which is within the city of Tacoma Park. And so we have a long, stretched-out walk shed there. And it's, it's not quite an apples-to-apples comparison with the other areas because we don't have any utilization data at all for Saturday for the, for the colleges, garages. But they're not, they're not full. They're very empty at that time.
I'm sorry, could you just go back and just toggle that one more time?
You see, the utilization on most of the residential permit streets is a little bit higher on a Saturday in that area than on a weekday.
So can I just ask on that point?
Yeah, sure.
So, on Saturdays, does that mean that visitors to those areas? Because you would think on Saturday night, a lot of people are coming there. They're just parking for free in the neighborhoods. Is that why the lots are less full?
Well, no, because the, the on-street spaces really are less full on Saturdays in general. I mean, there's some, there's some fine-grained detail to it. Like, you know, in talking back and forth here, for whatever reason, Albany Ave is very full on a Saturday evening.
I guess I mean less, I mean less about the Montgomery College or Tacoma, but more in the downtown, or the, the commercial strip area. Is that, could that be explained by the fact that then people know that they can park without getting a ticket in the residential areas on the weekends?
Yeah, it, it could be. It could be that on a weekday, people feel a little bit more restricted and less apt to park in the residential streets because they, they feel that the, the permit, that the permit, the residential permits are enforced at that time, and, and they don't worry about that on a Saturday.
Back though to the one next to Montgomery College, the, I always say the wrong name. I always want to say, yeah, the Bell Ziegler Park and the, you know, the sports activities that are there may, may be part of the reason for some of the weekend parking.
Yeah, it does show that the, the actual parking space lot at the park itself is relatively full. Or it's between 50 and 75% on a Saturday evening. And for both of these, we, we tried to time our data collection, starting around 5:30 and going to about 7:30. And it's, you can't hit every part of the study area at exactly the same time because your crew has to move around. But we particularly tried to hit the Carroll Avenue corridor right at 7 o'clock because the anecdotal evidence we got from the business owners in that area and from some of our stakeholders is that from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM is the critical time as far as when parking is tightest along Carroll Avenue by all the businesses.
Just to clarify, what I saw in the maps that you shared overall was that on almost every single residential block, both weekends and weeknights, there's almost never a block that is more than 76%. There's, every block has almost always got 25% free, or more.
Yes, for the most part, for the most part, yeah. And I wanted to touch on, you know, another aspect of the study, which was to look at what future development was already known and what impact it might have on the overall parking needs for the area. We just documented three residential developments that we know are coming. They all happen to be on the DC side of the line. The Tacoma Junction development is a little bit too TBD at this point for us to quantify it in here. But here's the, a detail of the, the metro station area. And you all probably know of these projects as well as I do. There's the apartment complex, which is nearly complete between Willow Avenue and Maple Avenue. That's 153 dwelling units and 92 parking spaces. There's also the development just across the tracks from the metro station in DC. Also 150 dwelling units, only 39 spaces there. It's being marketed very heavily as a, a place for people who like to walk and use transit to live. And then eventually, a little further down the line, this is a few years off, but the, the redevelopment of the metro station parking lot itself, which will be all residential, that 153 dwelling unit figure, I understand, is going up. But this was the most recent verifiable, published number that we were able to get from anywhere. It will have 148 spaces for the residents, and it will have 87 metered spaces, which are for the transit users. And that, in one sense, is a reduction because there are 160 spaces right now to support the metro station. But in another, in another sense, it's an increase because those spaces they have right now are all, only available for a few hours during the midday, and they're supposed to be kiss-and-ride during the AM and the PM peaks. And whereas the, the spaces under the new development are going to be metered spaces up to 12 hours. So they could really be used by commuters to park at the metro station. Whereas really, there is no commuter, real commuter parking at that station right now. So that's a total of over 500 new dwelling units within the next few years, with 275 parking spaces, or 279 parking spaces. And Montgomery College, from their facilities plan, we learned that they expect to have a 30% increase enrollment between 2013 and 2023 for the Tacoma Park-Silver Spring campus. And that, they have calculated, would leave them, if they don't add any parking to their own facilities with a deficit of around 375 spaces. And they estimate that they have a deficit right now of about 90 spaces. I'll touch on that again in a little bit, when I get a couple slides further, as far as what that means. But this is just a quick look at their campus, and the yellow buildings are, are spots that within, in their facilities plan, they have identified as candidate places to, to increase the size of their facilities. And the stars are locations that they've identified as additional infill location possibilities.
And how many parking spaces do they anticipate building? I know you said they need 375, but I don't think they're going to build 375.
Their, their facilities plan doesn't specify how many they will build.
Can you go back to that map for a second? You jumped off of that one pretty quickly. And what, so what are the stars?
The stars are just additional infill candidate sites that they've identified. And that's really the, the extent that they've been identified in the college's plan.
So, what's the sense on how much congestion there would be? I mean, do they need to construct more parking? Is that what you're saying, based on the projected enrollment increase?
Well, they're projecting that if they do, if they do experience the increased enrollment that they have projected out, that they would be short 375 parking spaces. And they have around 1,200 on this campus. And it's hard to say how much of that would impact the city of Tacoma Park because surrounding the campus is not just the city of Tacoma Park, but on the other side is Silver Spring and not too much further away, DC as well. And so that additional parking load would probably be spread out 360 degrees around the campus.
But you don't have recommendations on where that should go at this point?
No, not at this time, no. So we did a series of stakeholder interviews as part of our study, including Councilman Kobar as one of the stakeholders. And, and these are some of the key bullet points that we pulled out from those interviews. One, there's a considerable amount of concern about new develop coming, development coming that has reduced parking requirements over what was required in the past, and what kind of impact that's going to have, and whether it's going to make parking scarce in the study area. We heard that either, we heard that in some way or form from most of the stakeholders we talked to. We heard over and over again that the, the parking meters in Tacoma Park that only accept quarters are, are an inconvenience and a hindrance, and that it leads to people, it leads to a higher rate of violations because people tend to, to just not have the change. And so they, they park and they take their chances. We also heard that the parking pressures from Montgomery College are really a short-term seasonal thing because the college has its highest number of students for a few weeks, two times a year, at the beginning of the fall semester and the beginning of the, the spring semester. But then, as most, as happens at most colleges, as the semester goes on, a certain number of students drop their courses and, and, or, or stop coming as regularly, and the demand goes way down. And after a few weeks, they feel like they have, that their parking is contained within their facilities with room to spare. And back to the Tacoma Park Seventh Day Adventist Church Lot, which we mentioned before, really, if one of the recommendations to come out of this study were to be to establish multi-use parking facilities that serve different purposes over the course of the week. And spoiler alert, that might be one of the recommendations. That's something that really is going on in an unofficial capacity within our study area right now through that parking lot. There's the, the parking lot we're talking about right there, that red zone down at the bottom of, of this map. And of course, on Saturdays, it serves the church itself and is filled by their own parishioners for their services. And then on Sundays, it's the primary parking resource for the Tacoma Park Farmer's Market on Laurel Avenue. And then during the week, they rent out 50 spaces to Strayer University, another 15, I want to say, to Bank of America. And then, I'm not sure how many, but they know they, they rent some more out to the businesses in that shopping center along Laurel there. And they even, they even make space available for the church vans, for the Presbyterian Church over on Tulip Avenue, which doesn't have any parking of its own. So really, that one resource provides a number of benefits over the course of every week to the residents in the area. And without that one resource, the parking situation might be considerably different. And so we have a certain number of key findings from our own analysis as well. One is that park is, parking is generally available at all time periods, but it might be a few blocks further away from the destination that people have become accustomed to over the years. And there are some available parking uses, resources, on or off-street, pretty close to the Carroll Avenue corridor that do go unused at peak times. And it's maybe just because people don't know that there's parking around the corner on, on another street, or that a lot, which is used by a business during the day, might be available for them to park in at night. Another finding is that the pressure from metro commuters parking the area does not really seem to be the, to the degree that it might have been assumed to be in the past. That station generally draws from within one to two miles. It has a very high walk-to-metro mode share and a very high bike-to-metro mode share. The, the most recent numbers that we had on that were from 2012, the last time Metro did their ridership survey. They're doing a, a new one right now, so that might be something to look at in a few months' time. I would bet that the bike score for that station has gone up considerably in the four years in between. And it's only an 8% share for the, the passengers at that station who actually drive and park at the station. And we found that there is a significant amount of parking availability, at least 40% plus during the peak times at all of the walksheds we looked at. So, on to the fun stuff, the recommendations. The first area we wanted to look at is curbside management. And the first recommendation is to, at some point, replace the, the existing meters that use quarters with pay stations, one per block, that accept credit card transactions and pay-by-phone transactions. I know the city already is working with the Park Mobile Company, who does the, the remote pay for DC. And one thing that helps- And one thing that helps, when you take away the meters and you take away the lines, additionally, you get more spaces because those spaces are twenty feet long by Maryland standards. Actually, twenty-two, the interior ones, the ones at the end of the block, can be twenty. And there are just a lot of cars nowadays that are a lot shorter than that. And in practice, you usually get ten to fifteen percent more spaces by taking out the lines. We also recommend to extend the, the span of the meters, which currently go to six thirty?
Seven.
Actually, there's some variation, but a lot of, most of them go to six. Most of them go to six, six thirty or seven. Extend them all to eight PM in the Old Town area, just based on the fact that seven to eight PM is the busiest time for the restaurants in the area. And then also to specify times of day for commercial loading zones in the area so that those spaces after a certain time in the day could then be reused again as metered spaces. And also consider reinstating that loading zone that used to be in front of the Ace Hardware because currently people, the loading zone is, an unofficial loading zone across the street, and the, and the stuff gets hauled across the street. More curbside management. We recommend that there be some effort put into alternatives to private vehicles and parking in the restaurant corridor, those few blocks of Carroll Avenue where most of the restaurants are located. Ride share refers to things like Uber and Lyft especially. And the additional car-share spaces are for, refers to things like Zipcar. And I got a little map showing some locations where those might be. The blue, the blue outlines and, and shapes are either lots or curbside places where a ride-share zone, a couple of spaces could be, could be designated for pickup and drop, drop-offs for the ride-sharing services. And then slightly different list for a car-share spaces. I took away the Bank of America lot for that purpose and instead substituted the CVS lot. A lot of times, stores like a CVS do like to have a Zipcar space in their parking lot because the person coming to pick up the Zipcar might also pick up a bottle of aspirin or something like that.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
What is the theory behind why there's a need for a drop-off zone for ride share?
Just to, if you make it a little easier, if you facilitate it, that might get a, a few more people to use that option rather than driving and parking themselves. And so it relieves a little bit of pressure on the parking resources that are in the area. Pricing. Most of the meters in the study area have been set to a standard rate of seventy-five cents an hour, eighty-six percent of them, as a matter of fact. The ones that are still holdouts are all on the Tacoma Park side of the line, I'm sorry to say. And it might be that some of them are actually set to the right rate, and they just have the wrong sticker on the meter. So that would be something to check in the near term. And then performance pricing during the peak hours would be a good way to ensure that there's always some metered spaces available along the Carroll Avenue corridor. And we suggested to, to raise and lower the rates for that area with an aim towards having ninety percent occupancy during the, during the highest demand times so that someone coming to park can pretty much always find a space after searching two or three blocks and doesn't end up driving around for a long time. And another recommendation, and, you know, the sort of thing, you don't have to do a very technology-intensive implementation. Now, you've probably heard, hear about places like DC and San Francisco that are putting sensors in the ground and cameras up to count how many cars are occupying. You have to count the cars, obviously, but you could do it monthly, you could do it quarterly, and you could adjust your rates, you know, that frequently. You don't have to do it every day. And you could utilize the enforcement personnel who currently go out and ticket cars to do that data collection on a regular, regular basis. Another recommendation is to unbundle the rent and the parking for tenants both of residential buildings and office buildings because there are a lot of tenants who don't want the parking space that comes with their apartment or their office space. And then those spaces could be reused either as monthly commuter parking or as short-term parking to support retail uses. Those type of things would require an agreement with the, with the landhold, with the property owners, obviously. Some adjustments to the residential permit parking program. This is a map of the violations that were recorded in 2015, or specifically, the residential permit parking violations. And you can see, they're really concentrated in a few blocks, close to Carroll Ave, the first block off of Carroll Avenue. And the, the rates are pretty low everywhere else. So one thing we recommended is probably shrinking those zones down. Oh, here are the zones, by the way, as they currently exist. So Zone One and One A, personally, I would redraw as a single Zone One and, and narrow it down. Concentrate it more on the Montgomery College campus. And then-
Can I go back and forth in the maps?
Sure. See, here's, here's one, and there's One A, a little bitty, it's just an L-shaped on two streets. So I, I would use this just to protect those few blocks that are closest to the campus from having too many students park on those streets just because there really didn't seem to be any violations at all back here towards where we are right now. And then I would consolidate Zones Two, Two A, and Three into a single Zone Two concentrated around the Carroll Avenue Commercial Corridor. I'm gonna toggle back, actually, to get away from my-
Can I ask on that, Piney Branch Road is just a brown or gray one because it doesn't have permit parking?
Yeah.
Should it?
Well, you see, I actually included it in Zone One there. That's something that would, you'd wanna look at a little bit further because there really, there really aren't any streets other than Piney Branch and Philadelphia that aren't residential permit streets once you get back into the neighborhoods. Now, Philadelphia, I don't think there's very much parking on it at all, if, if at any. Yeah, that's because it's a state highway.
Well, Piney Branch is also, but there's room on that in a way that there isn't in Philadelphia, so.
So it may be desirable to have at least one street where it isn't residential permit parking so that you have someplace for people who don't have the permits to park. But I, I personally just included it because it showed a high rate of occupancy. We're also throwing in a recommendation there to adjust the permit-only parking times to push them a little bit later to eight PM, Monday through Saturday, again, to reflect the period of highest demand along Carroll Avenue in the main commercial corridor. And the fact that really, you're protecting the neighborhoods from too many people who are, are coming to the commercial corridor, parking in the neighborhood and, and, and taking up all the spaces. But recognizing the fact that those, those permit parking zones do generally have spaces available, going hand-in-the-hand with that would be to allow two-hour parking by the general public during, from ten AM to eight PM. And that could either be, that could either be a free two hours, or you could actually charge for it, especially once you get a pay, pay-by-mobile phone system up. Because then, once somebody drives into that area, they see a sign that says, "You can park in this neighborhood, you just have to pay, you can park up to two hours." They pay on their phone, and the enforcement officer coming along can scan their license plate and know whether they have paid or not. And you could make it just one time, not renewable. There are a lot of blocks in DC, I know, through the Park Mobile System where you can only park the one, the one stretch. You can't renew it for more time after the time expires.
So does that enforcement work well? I mean, is there, we don't have the kind of enforcement staff, obviously, that DC does. Is there, can that be done easily?
I think so, yeah.
I will say that with, with the Park Mobile System coming into play in Tacoma Park, our officers will have that equipment that you, that they can check.
Right.
I, how many officers are actually needed, I think, I'm not ready to say.
You know, the, your partners across the border in, in D-Dot are, can legitimately be tabbed as experts on that particular matter. And so what I would recommend is, is working hand in glove with them as you go further down that line. And I can just say anecdotally that I do park in DC a lot, and I use the Park Mobile System a lot. And there's always that worry in the back of your sp, your head that I didn't put a little thing on my dashboard to say that I parked here, but I never get a ticket when I, when I have paid. And I always seem to when I go fifteen minutes over. On to the next recommendation, shared leasing agreements. And we talked about this with the Tacoma Park Seventh Day Adventist Church Lot. There are a few other locations within the study area that could possibly serve that same role. The one on the left is a lot that's down between Willow and Laurel on the DC side of the line. And the one on the right is the post office lot, which sits there empty after post office hours. So there are a handful of locations where, if an agreement is reached with the, with the property owners, you could make a few more spaces available, and a few more spaces could make a significant difference.
What about, if I may ask, the lot behind the Bank of America?
Yeah, that too.
That would, because it sits empty, and then you're told this is, you can't park there even though it's, there's obviously, the bank's been closed for hours.
And we've, I wanna say that's around twenty spaces. And so twenty spaces is, is like two blocks' worth of metered spaces in your downtown. And that's, that's one of the first ones that I would zero in on and try to come up with some sort of agreement with the Bank of America.
Now, if, if the city pursued an MOU with any of these landlords, do you have a recommended rate that we should charge? Should it be the same metered rate, or should it be different?
Well, I mean, you could set it up as metered parking, or you could set it up as free. And, and you probably might have more success just coming up with, signing an agreement with the landlord that people could park free because the, the property owner might not want to go through all the hassle of either having meters or a pay station or something set up on their lot. And they don't, wouldn't wanna give the impression that during the day, when it's available for free to customers, that they're charging their customers. So you might have more success just making it available for free, something like that.
But would a private owner like the Bank of America have a reason to agree to do that if they weren't making any money on it?
That's for them to say, not me.
I mean, are you aware of cases where outfits have done that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I'm, I'm not pulling one off the top of my head right now.
But in other words, that's not impossible.
It certainly can happen. The one thing that I've heard, the only time I've heard of pushback is that there's a wear and tear on their parking lot. And so there may be some contribution that needs to be dealt with in some part of an agreement that was related to-
Or liability costs or something.
Right, so there may be some agreement about that.
And then information is another, another way in which the parking resources in the study area can go farther. Static information signs on the street, the, the ones that show here are probably a little bit different than what you might want to use because there aren't a lot of publicly-owned lots downtown. There aren't a lot of lots in the area. Most of the parking is on-street. And so it might be more to pointing down at streets that have, that have metered parking. If it were something that were managed through the Old Town Business Association, you could have a, a one set of signage on both sides of the state line and thus establish more of a identity for that, for that commercial area, for Old Town Tacoma, that helps brand the area. And I think even more important would be to make the same information available on a website that is easily viewed on a mobile device. And I'm not, again, I'm not saying real-time information that tells you exactly how many cars are parked in this lot at this time, but just tells you where the parking is so that people don't search around, don't spend too much time searching for it. And so that one, one block or one lot doesn't go unutilized when another is, is overly taxed.
Is there a software developer that we could buy a package that could provide that for people that come into the area? Or we'd have to-
I'm sure there are many.
Build it ourselves.
Yeah, I'm sure there are many, and there are probably, there are probably free apps to do it. Yeah. It's, you could even have a, what's called a hacker fair nowadays. If you make your data available and then challenge people to, to solve a problem, there are people that just do it for the fun of it. On to bike parking, which I mentioned before just how high the utilization rates are for the bike parking at the metro station. Elsewhere in the study area, there's currently a lot of bike parking, but it's not necessarily easy to find in all locations, and it's not distributed very evenly throughout the major activity centers. One thing we were throwing out there as a, as a recommendation is to come up with an attractive, distinctive style of bike rack that could be regularly spaced around, along Carroll Avenue and at other key destinations. There's an example there from Falls Church, Virginia, that we're just put in in the last few months. And another suggestion is to implement a bike corral, which is essentially taking one or two parking spaces and trading it out for parking for probably twenty bikes, and thus reducing your overall demand, accommodating more people with the same amount of space. And there's a couple of examples right there. One that's enclosed, and one that's really just two planters and a bike rack in the road. And it doesn't necessarily have to be on-street spaces that are converted to bike corrals, although that's what you see in a lot of major cities. It could be, it could be put into a parking lot, a, a portion of a parking lot carved out as well. Okay.
Yeah.
I surprised myself by getting to the end.
You're good. Terrific, well, thank you so much. This is a terrific presentation, lots of information. One question I had going back to when we were talking before about the, the maps, the real-time maps and everything is, I've noticed in DC now, they have, was it the Panda Parking app to help you find spaces? Do you know anything about, like, like this next generation of parking apps that people are developing?
There are dozens, literally. I have a couple of different ones on my phone, but not Panda. And they, for the most part, it's an aggregator. So they pull publicly-available information on where parking is, either on-street spaces or lots. And then it just, it's a maps program that has all the parking locations highlighted. And allows you to search, and, and, and you can, you can click on an individual garage or a lot, and it'll tell you who owns it, what the hours of operation are, how much it costs to park there, et cetera, et cetera. That's what most of them are. I'm not that familiar with Panda in and of itself, and whether it goes a little bit further. In cities where they do have the real-time capabilities, like San Francisco is the example that everybody points to, they have taken it technologically one step further that you can go to the SF Park website and, and look at the block where you wanna park, and it'll tell you which of those spaces, right at that moment in time, is available and which ones aren't. Sort of akin to the airport parking that you're, you might be used to with the red and green lights, yeah.
I might, in, in your parking study, did you consider anything related to people who have driveways that would lend out their spaces for others? Did you look at anything like that?
We did have a discussion about having tiers of a cost structure for the residential parking permits, and that have the lowest price be for people who do not have a driveway and charge a little bit more for someone who does have a driveway, and, and have the second permit cost a little bit more than the first. Some of the existing, some of the five parking zones that we looked at before, if you don't mind me. actually have a few more permits issued than there are spaces in them. 1A, 2A, and 3. And yet during the peak periods that we analyzed, there was always at least forty percent availability throughout those zones.
Now, when, when somebody was talking about apps, one of the apps that I was thinking about was almost like an Airbnb kind of thing for renting out your driveway to somebody else. That you could identify, oh yeah, happy to, so that's a
I would, I would think the parking crunch would have to get a lot tighter.
It would have to get a lot tighter than to do that.
Because there's space available right now.
Right. No, this, I mean, this
In all the neighborhoods.
I really appreciate getting all the detailed data on that.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thanks. Yeah, I did, I know I have one more thing to do. I just had a few questions.
Yep.
A great presentation, so thank you. Brian, so you mentioned, I think, that there was often as much as forty percent available on some of the residential streets. And I think Councilmember Mail was talking about, you know, they weren't being more than seventy-six percent full. So if some, if some version of that is true, and maybe it's tighter when you get closer to Carroll or Laurel, in your recommendation to both lengthen the restrictions in the residential areas and allow some shorter-term parking for people who aren't residents, so why do you think you need to extend the time period if there's generally parking available anyway? I'm just trying to get a fix on that.
That was just to kind of shift the focus of what the, the zones are for. Because I think they were originally laid out to ensure that, that metro commuters would not take all the spaces in those neighborhoods closest to the metro station. And what we see from the data we collected is that's not the force that is causing some of those blocks to fill up. The, the, the pressure that is impacting those neighborhoods is the customers coming to businesses along the Carroll Avenue corridor. And while there are a lot of other parking resources, there's, there's the lot off of Laurel Avenue, which allows free parking up to an hour. And the data we got on that shows it's very highly used. And there's the metered spaces themselves. There does seem to be a pattern of, of people venturing, you know, at least one block off of Carroll Avenue and a little bit into the, the residential areas to park.
So in your experience, just in parking anywhere, how far away if someone is forced to park, do they kind of give up? Like, so in other words, if I, I don't know, if I wanted to go to one of the restaurants right in the Old Town area and I was from somewhere else and I was kind of looking around maybe at seven-thirty on Saturday and kind of really couldn't find anything, would I go, what would it take on average for me to park, you know, four or five blocks away? And/or should there be like a shuttle from the Tacoma Junction lot or, or from maybe the metro lot to get people there who wanted to do that? Is there a sort of a critical point at which as they ask, forget it, I'll go somewhere else?
That varies by the individual.
Yeah.
And, and really I think the key is, is people are willing to walk a little bit further. If they're going to park in a place where they know that they're not going to run a risk of a ticket or getting towed and, and it's, and it's within a reasonable distance that they're not going to be drenched with sweat by the time they get to their destination.
Right.
Or freezing cold in the winter.
Right, right.
We use, you, you have to, you have to pick a standard distance. And that's why we use quarter, a quarter mile, just because when you're talking about how far the typical person is willing to walk, a quarter mile is the most commonly used standard in the transportation planning business. And certainly what's used most often for bus stops, sometimes for like metro stations, we use a half a mile. But a quarter mile is the most commonly used distance. And so that's what we use to use.
So you talked a lot about common signage and having to have that work with Washington DC as well as us, given where the, the boundary goes. I think you talked to some stakeholders from DC, but do people in DC kind of know about this? Do they, do they have any reaction? Do they think they might want to work with us or is that hard to answer?
Well, yeah. And in fact, within the last couple of years, DDOT and the city have worked together also with the Business Association to do a, a metering plan. And that's why most of the meters have been set to that standard seventy-five cent rate. The DC meters, I think, used to be more. And the, the span for those meters was reduced. They used to be eight-hour meters. A lot of the ones on the DC sideline, they've been cut back to four as a result of that as well. So they're, they're, they're willing to work.
Just two other things. I appreciate that.
Peter, I just wanted to also mention, as a result of the, the study and the outreach, city staff and DDOT staff have been coordinating and plan to continue coordinating on both sides. DDOTs, as Brian was mentioning, they're, they're very efficient and aggressively, efficiently and aggressively looking at all their parking assets in the city. And they've been looking at this corner of the city as it's developing and to sort of see what, what legacy issues they have here as well and, and do very much want to coordinate with us.
Good, okay. Just two other things. So it sounds like, from what you said, Brian, if, if we put in the pay stations or the, not the, the traditional meters.
Right.
We could potentially increase, at least in the areas where there is that parking, by ten or fifteen percent. Not necessarily ten or fifteen percent in the whole area, but ten or fifteen percent right there. So I've, believe it or not, I've heard from people who say, well, you know, I don't always have a credit card. I like using quarters, et cetera. People like that, just out of luck under, in the new world that we're going into?
Well, but no, but you can, you can use actual cash money at the pay stations too.
Okay.
Now, you may have to walk partway down the block to do that.
Right.
It's not going to be five feet from your car.
But they accept, they accept cash as well?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And then the last question, and this is, it's really just kind of a philosophical question, I guess. You were saying, well, on the main street like Carroll or Laurel, you want to maybe during the highest, busiest times, charge more so that there's more, there will always be spaces there. But so what's the balance between we just want people to park close by or we actually kind of want to discourage them from parking close by? So other people can park there. How do you sort of weigh that out?
If you enter into using the concept of performance parking to inform your pricing, then I think you have to be open to raising the rate or lowering the rate. And, and that's something, I mean, DC is an obvious, very close-by local example who has implemented this in, in parts of the city and is looking at implementing it citywide. Because I've looked at a lot of areas around the city. And one thing they found out is they would actually reduce the rates in a lot of places in order to, to raise the occupancy. The, the whole concept is that if, if, if a block is a hundred percent full, then that's too much because nobody can find a space there. If it's only twenty-five percent full, then that's not enough because that's parking resources going unused. And it's, you set a percentage that you want to try to hit and you raise or lower your price to get to that. And so if you find that you've set a certain price, seventy-five cents an hour, which it currently is, and, and, and your blocks are only thirty to forty percent full, well then, one way, the lever that you have to, to fill those blocks up a bit more is to reduce that rate. But I, you know, I think what you find is along Carroll Avenue, those blocks are quite full. And so more likely, you would raise that rate a little bit. And you don't jack it up. You don't double it. You raise it a little bit at a time until you hit that sweet spot you're looking for.
So that's a hunt for that sweet spot.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Scholz?
Do you think that seventy-five cents an hour, which is the rate for most of the meters that you counted, is a reasonable rate based on your surveys?
Well, again, it's based on what occupancy that gives you. And, and honestly, here, let me scroll back to one of the other maps. Scroll ways back apparently. Seventy-five cents an hour for all the meters, what that gives you is gets you jam-packed parking spaces, a hundred percent full, right along Carroll Avenue. And then just really around the corner, only fifty percent. And across the street from that, below fifty percent. And so one might look at this and say, well, there's obviously people, there's demand to come and park here. There's just a little bit more demand to park right on Carroll because that's the route that people take in and those are the spaces they're going to see first. And the business that they're trying to go to is located right on that street. So why not have that rate be a little bit more than over here on Eastern Avenue? Even though it's a short distance away, you know, it's, 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 it's miles away if someone never sees that other space over there.
It might as well not even exist as far as they're concerned. Yeah, the psychology of distance is a strange thing, trying to figure people's perception.
But if people learn that, you know, say for instance, that rate on Carroll goes up by a little bit, people will, people will absorb that knowledge and they'll remember the next time they're coming that a block away, there's a space that's twenty-five cents less an hour or fifty cents less an hour, which might not sound like a big amount of money. But people will turn right instead of left to save a couple bucks. Why would, why would you?
Yeah, right.
If it's, if it's not that far away?
Next question. Did you pay any attention to handicap parking spaces and their usage and, or, or non-usage?
We, we, we captured their locations when we did our inventory and we marked them all down. On the DC side of the line, they tend to be metered spaces. And on the city side of the line, they're free. And they tend to be mostly concentrated around, I actually have that, that map in the presentation showing where they are, although it's going to be very, very small. If you can see some really tiny specks of light blue, that's where the handicap spaces are. So they tend to be concentrated around the metro station and around the, some of the religious institutions. The, the ADA standards calls for one space out of every twenty-five to be handicapped. And if you were to implement the, the pay stations on a per-block basis, you would still charge those people who are parking in the handicap space the same rate, but you would mark on the ground or with signage that this is a premium spot and it's reserved for handicap, handicap patrons. And if you were to take out the meters and replace them with pay stations, that's a perfect opportunity to reassess how those should be spaced out and where they should be. And make sure that you, the number that you have at least meets that one per every twenty-five, right?
The, the thought, Ms. Ludlow mentioned a little, a few minutes ago about parking apps and the idea of being sort of the Airbnb for driveways. That would be a perfect solution for the dissolution of the area B or on this map that's shown as 1A. That way, the city would be completely out of the picture as it's going to be in this case. But people who want to work it out could figure that out. And the folks over on, on the east side of the city would be able to negotiate with residents over there who are interested in picking up some loose change. I just commented that. And the last comment was, is that the parking around the, in the metro station, I think, is so irregular in terms of its constraints. I mean, I realize what you said. It was designed to prevent commuter parking. People come in in the morning and leave in the evening. But with the, the only half-quarter meters, the other day I went to the baseball game. I knew I was going to be gone a long time, so I had to put in twenty-eight quarters. I'd literally go to the bank earlier in the day because I knew I was going to, and, and so that parking lot's designed to discourage parking as much as possible. And my, my point is, is that I think it creates, that all, all that artificiality distorts things terrifically in terms of commuter parking and other kinds of parking. Just an observation is all.
Thank you. Councilmember McCrashy?
Thanks, Mary. Just a quick question for you.
Sure.
You mentioned the farmer's market, for example, which is a weekly stand year-round blocking off of, I think, very prominent parking spots in Tacoma Park. And then I also think about sort of general events that we have throughout the city, including the, the Fall Festival, which may not have been within the timeline of your study. But your general thoughts, if you ever were able to obtain any data about the impact of parking in residential neighborhoods and, and streets off the main corridor when we have those types of either big events or weekly events like the, the farmer's market?
You're right. That was a little bit outside the scope of our study. But, um, because we weren't going to be able to observe that, only fifteen spaces are lost when the farmer's market takes up that block of Laurel Ave. So I don't think that it probably has a really, a really big impact, especially since the, the church lot around the corner is available for that.
Right.
You know, for a bigger street fair, you're talking about blocking off more streets, like the Fourth of July Parade. And so there's probably a higher likelihood of having some impact on the neighborhoods. You know, Councilman Kofar mentioned the possibility of a shuttle from the city-owned lot by Tacoma Junction on down. And one thing I was going to say at that time is that, the distance between there and, and the, and downtown of Old Town really is in an unfortunate sweet spot, I think, in that it's just a little bit further than most people will walk. And it's a little bit shorter than makes sense for, to have like a free transit shuttle taking people back and forth on a regular basis. But for a special event, it might make sense. And it wouldn't have to be a bus per se, it could just be a van because you're talking about a few people at a time.
Well, if you had like a circulating bus that went to two other places, would that become more, I'm not talking about the cost, but does that make it more, more useful if you have that?
Well, I mean, we do have several transit vehicles that already pass through that route. I think there's three or four ride-on routes, plus we have bike share. Just to Councilmember McCrashy's point, parking also isn't enforced on Sundays in DC or in Tacoma Park. And so I think that might also play into the weekly farmer's market and the availability of parking, really a block or two away. I know I park on DC Sundays in a metered spot.
And even so, the, the Business Association said that they believe, or there's a perception at least, even with the, the, the church parking available and the fact that all the on-street parking is available because it's Sunday, there is a perception that, that that farmer's market does lose out a little bit on customers to the Silver String, Silver Spring, not Silver String, farmer's market because, because of parking issues.
Councilmember Stig?
Thank you. I appreciate you doing this study. You know, council has been talking about parking in this area for a number of years now, so it's good to actually see a comprehensive study. In, in DC, you know, there's a renaissance going on and some developers have decided that they do not want to provide parking. Have you done any analysis to see how, one, that impacts the residents in these multifamily buildings? And two, what are the parking needs for people that live around that building? Is there an increase in demand for parking because a hundred, hundred-and-fifty unit building says, I'm not going to provide parking? Or do people just figure out how to live without a car?
I'd say it varies considerably across the city. And, and there, the, the DC government's program to reduce parking requirements for developers is based heavily on locations around metro stations. But in that, I would say that all metro station areas are not created equal. And there's a big difference between the area, for instance, around the Tacoma Station or around Fort Totten, one stop down the line, than around Van Ness or Dupont Circle, in which you're going to have a very high rate of people wanting to locate in those neighborhoods who do not have an automobile and do not have any intention to have an automobile. The city has gotten to the point now where you have a lot of those choice, no-car households.
Right.
Especially, and it's, it's even further enhanced by Um, especially, and it's, it's even further enhanced by the advent of things like Uber and Lyft and Zipcar and Bike Share, um, in the city. Um, I think, uh, there's certainly a demand, uh, for residential units, uh, without the encumbrance of a parking space that goes with it, even out at the edges of DC where we are, uh, in Tacoma, um, but it's going to be a different calculation than, than in the, the, the highest residential corridors in the city, and I don't know what, I don't know what their formula is for, for factoring how much to reduce the parking rate at an area like this versus the densest parts of the city now. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One quick question.
All right, one quick question.
Please, DIA's project, uh, next to the metro station, have you, there's a lot of units that are going in there, so 153 or something like that?
It's going up from that, yeah.
It's going up from that, but there's also, you said, a very large number of parking spaces for occupants.
Yes.
And in your experience, given that it's right on the metro, does that like an over, overkill in terms of parking spaces for the residents?
I'm hesitant to say, since there's that, um, uncertainty into how many units they actually are planning now.
Mm-hmm.
Our information was based on reports that Metro did, uh, and the assumptions that were inherent in their report are a couple of years old, and from their perspective, once they had the information they needed as far as how much parking was going to be there in support of the metro station, they, they are more hands-off in terms of how much parking is provided for the residential development there.
But if I should have been...
They want to make sure that they, that they ensure enough access to their metro station, and that's their motivation.
There's been no action at all of any kind for probably close to a year, and I don't know whether that's a function of these other, uh, apartment buildings coming online sooner, including the one just on the other side of the tracks, but I think they were moving toward a somewhat higher number, down from even how high it was before, but moving toward a low percentage of parking spaces per unit lower than has been standard.
I see.
But it, it's very much of an year, I mean, there's been crickets for close to a year, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
This has been a terrific presentation, a lot for us to chew on, um, and, um, I hope the recommendations and what you presented, uh, I'm sure, uh, we'll be talking a lot about. It's nice to see we're moving in that direction on some of them already, um, and so, um, next steps?
Well, we've got some thinking to do now that we've gotten this. We do have, I want to mention, we've got a couple of public meetings scheduled for October. Um, are there any other next steps between now and then?
Yeah, um, well, so we'll, um, we'll post the presentation on the, on the website, um, and, you know, we welcome feedback, both on the maps and the input, some of these preliminary recommendations, and, um, city staff will be continuing to, um, look at the recommendations from the consultant and some other work that we've been doing, especially in other parts of the city that were outside of this particular study area, um, to develop some recommendations, uh, to present to the public, uh, later in the fall, um, after the council comes back from recess. Um, and our expectation is to, um, uh, use that input from the public to, uh, put together a report that city council can look at, uh, towards the end of the calendar year for some implementation and action, um, next in 2017.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's our outlook moving forward, um, right now.
Um, I think if you're Donald Trump or Hillary Clinton, October seems really close. It does seem kind of far, though, to me, and Ms. Hamer mentioned in her public comments, you know, the point of not losing, uh...
Momentum.
Momentum, and I know we're away in August, but do we really, I mean, what's the idea for waiting all the way to October? I guess I'm just curious about that.
Well, we do have some additional, um, work and research and data collection to perform. Um, as I mentioned, this is one part of the city that we're looking at, but we're looking at the whole city, and we're looking at all of the other, uh, parking permit zones, which have slightly different dynamics and needs and pressures, um, than these. Um, you know, part of it's a timing thing, um, and recognizing that September is a very busy time with a lot of other meetings, um, and, uh, summer is also not, as from our experience, the best time to hold public meetings in terms of attendance, so, eh, there is that consideration, um, but we are moving forward meanwhile on some other things like the Park Mobile.
Right, I think for, for certain things, there's, you know, I have not wanted to wait on making, using Park Mobile for the call-in, um, items on the, on the meters, and I think coordination with, um, the DC government as best we can during this time will be good use of the time.
Okay. And I also would encourage, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with, um, individual council members holding smaller meetings, neighborhood meetings, um...
And encouraging people to send in their comments.
Right, and send in their comments. I, I don't think it's, we have to wait till October 3rd, um, to have meetings, um, I think we could, you know, build in smaller meetings, just like we're doing with the police department and other things, sometimes having meetings where we're doing it with just a, a few blocks to really dig into, um, some of those concerns, um, is easier than then bringing everyone together in October, so.
And, and some of the recommendations may have wider implications as they deal with enforcement or other kinds of, um, staffing, um, or resource-related activities in the city, things to think about in terms of budgets moving forward, so.
Sure. All right, well, thank you very much. I'm sorry it's so late. Thank you for staying. All right, we have one item left, and that is, I've just completely lost my agenda here.
Agenda item seven, if I could just make a statement on that one real quick, um, related to, it's a work session, um, another work session on the, uh, ordinance restricting retailers' use of disposable plastic bags, and since there was some back and forth and misunderstanding or confusion about what's in the ordinance and what isn't, um, it took me a little while today, but I will tell you what I believe the ordinance says, and as long as that's what people want, we'll be good to go for moving it forward. Um, the way the ordinance is written, um, farmer's markets are exempt from any part of the ordinance, they can do whatever they want until December 1st, 2017, and after that, they and they alone may provide compostable disposable bags at the point of sale. So that's, that seemed to be the key point, and I just wanted to make sure that that's where people are, and provided that's the case, I think it can just go forward, um, for the, for the action.
Okay.
Can I ask, yeah, can I ask a quick question? So I, I think that the, by the way, I have to say the ordinance looks great, like it's, uh, I know it's been a work in progress, but I think we've really gotten it right. But, and I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench into anything here, but I will. The farmer's market has, let's call it for a moment, the exception of compostable disposable plastic bags, right?
After December 1st.
Right.
2017.
Presumably, any other retailer in the city can also use compostable plastic bags?
Not for point of sale.
Not, just, okay, so they can use it prior to the point of sale, yes?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So when I look at lines, uh, forty-nine through sixty-three, which sort of talk about, A, which says, "Except as provided in subsection B of the section, retail establishments shall not provide disposable plastic bags," which is a defined term above.
Correct.
At the point of sale. Now, 1 and 2, and the exceptions that start on line 55, refer to, I believe, the defined term of disposable plastic bags. I understand why we want to explicitly provide the exception for compostable disposable plastic bags for the farmer's market, but the way I read this section, it's talking, it's, it's an exception that pertains to something outside the ambit of what this exception sort of discusses. Do you know what I mean? Like, I feel like it's a different defined term that we're now getting into, so I don't know if we want to just create a separate section C just for the farmer's market, which is a farmer's market exception, because 1 and 2 deal with the defined term disposable plastic bag, whereas 3 deals with compostable disposable plastic bag, which is a separate defined term in this document. Yeah, I see what you're saying. That sounds like a good idea.
I think that would be easy to do, so we would change A to say, "Except as provided in subsections B and C."
Right.
And then make, uh, 3 C.
Right, I think that that makes sense.
Any other discussion or questions?
Just to clarify, starting the day after this passes, nothing would prevent the farmer's markets from using compostable bags if they chose to.
That's correct.
Yes.
Any else? Nope? All right, then we're good to move on to this and have a first reading soon.
We'll make that change for the first reading, yes.
So what, when is our first reading?
It's like in August.
It's soon, it's, I, I...
The 13th?
Yes, it's the 13th. We didn't want to do it July 6th, so it's the 13th.
Okay.
So, yes, it's coming up. All right. That is it. I hope to see everyone tomorrow night at the vigil and on Saturday. We're adjourned.
Well, well, well.